...new business. A public hearing on the application for Copart of Connecticut. UVA Copart seeking a special permit on the section 3.24 of the town of Warren zoning bylaws. The applicant, Copart, is requesting to operate a junkyard slash automobile graveyard which includes the storage of salvage and motor vehicles. It's a class three permit issued now to the property owner, John Vigil, and Lois Vigil, together, a family business. And the class three is issued by the select people, not this board. The discussion is the transfer of that permit, class three permit, from Vigil to Copart's. The property is located on 656 Old West Warren Road, also known on the assessors map as lot 47. Portion of and located in the residential area of West Warren. Tonight we have the owner of the property, John Vigil, and his mother present, and a representative from Copart. In our last discussion we had with Mr. Vigil, the property and a map were shown to the board in full how the property was going to be broken off or in full. The map showed in full how the property would be set aside in Copart's, which joins the property already, is going to assume the property to the right, to the left, excuse me, as we go up their driveway at this address. Is there any questions from the board at this time so far based on what Mr. Vigil has presented? There are none? We'll move on with that. The applicant now is Copart's. Why the board asked for the meeting this evening on the permit was to make sure that both he and Vigil, or not he, excuse me, the company Copart's and Vigil's are understanding in how they wish the property to be transferred and will Copart describe was what they are going to do to the two existing buildings or any changes in the property. And the reason I'm asking for that is we have abutters here who have concerns. The town, in fact, has had concerns, the planning board, and we addressed this with the highway department. The highway department was supposed to post the road at both ends, reference the merging of the vehicles coming and going in the speed limits. The chief of police has been asked, I asked him personally the other day, prior to this merge, that some of these trucks coming and going, speed and how they enter and exit onto the road, which is a public road with school buses, people, and people just coming and going up into the facility. So that's part of the concerns by the residents, the board, and I will be speaking, I have an appointment, excuse me, with the town highway superintendent tomorrow in reference why it wasn't done and that it will be done. Excuse me, and here with Copart's tonight. I'm sure Copart's is going to be concerned about it too with that safety. You might be able to explain or answer questions that any of your abutters may have. So what I'd like to do now is have John Vigil representing the property there, just explain what their processes, the Vigil's process is going to be, and then I'll turn it over to Copart. If you would, John, please.
Certainly. Well, the proposed business is to sell the property that I now own. I have a salvage yard, a class three license on that property. I do dismantling, I do crushing, I do all that kind of stuff, which Copart doesn't do. I understand that the board had concerns with the environmental impact of my operation. I've kept it clean. I kept my other shop that I had since 1985 that was clean and went through all the tests and everything before Copart actually bought that facility from me back in '09. This is fairly new property. I've never crushed any cars on it yet. We're getting ready to, if this happens with them, to get rid of the crush and get rid of all my cars and open a land up for them, for them to use. Other than that, I think they're just a pickup in pretty much a sale car. They sell the whole car. They don't sell parts out of thereof. They don't drain anything. They don't take any motors out. They don't do anything like that. I believe it would have a less of an impact, a less chance of any spillage on the property with the new owners as opposed, I mean, not that I'm not careful, not that I don't do what I'm supposed to do as far as handling my shop, like was written into my order conditions, but I think there would be a less of a chance of any kind of impact on the environment, on the property by Copart owning the property. I think it'd be a good thing.
Very good. Anything else?
I don't know if I should present the plans of what they want to do or...
We'll go there in a moment. Are there any questions from the board reference John transferring that and the, what he just spoke on?
No questions.
I have one statement, John. Is it a fact, yes or no, please, that you had DEP inspect the property a few years ago and they found no problems? There was a letter, was there not?
Correct, there is.
Okay, so that DEP did come out to the facility and there was a letter written by DEP?
Right. That was a compliance with everything they were...
Okay, so, and the way the property is, it's going to be cleaned up and we'll get the Coparts in a moment. So that's where it is. The two buildings.
Two buildings, yeah.
As we go up the driveway on the right-hand side, I'll call it your barn.
Yep, that's exactly what it is.
No? Is that going, that's going also, correct? Any questions about that?
If not, I'm more than happy to take it out of there. It's just a, like a temporary shelter type container building that I built. They haven't decided whether they can utilize it, if they can't utilize it, and I will take it down and dismantle it.
Okay, that's, that's the answer there. Any other questions for anybody sitting here this evening right now? Abutters or whomever here present? Okay, here are none, none from the board. Thanks, John. What I'd like to do now is a representative from Copart's present, please, he can explain, he or she may explain what's going on and how, how the process is going to go for them. Anybody? Folks, don't be afraid. We're a pumpkin patch at the end of Worcester County and we know what goes on.
I'm the general manager for Copart. We're just asking the board to approve our expansion of currently what we do in our day-to-day operations. Just be more storage property for us. As John said, we don't dismantle, we don't sell parts, we sell strictly whole vehicles. Excuse me, via auction.
Okay. With the expansion of property that you're going to take over, does the board have any questions reference the move from the, from the right-hand side over and how it's going to be set up?
Not necessarily that, but I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Fine, sir, go ahead.
Simple question, just because I'm unfamiliar. I know where you are, I know where John's junkyard is. What are your hours of operation?
Typically eight AM to five PM and occasional Saturday.
Occasional Saturdays. So what about at night? Is there any deliveries or transportation?
We do have deliveries, yes.
You do?
Yeah.
When do those run at night, if you may, please?
Typically, we have cars picked up throughout the day by our self haulers. So all our transporters, we subcontract. If they don't get to shops by like five o'clock, they're going to come in later at night to drop them off. I can't really speak to exactly what time. Just depends what time they get to the yard. They come in, they have a key to our gate, they come in, they drop the cars and they leave.
Do you restrict any timeline at all for delivery of vehicles to your...
Not typically.
You do not?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With that, the answer to the first question was eight to five.
Correct.
And then from five to eight. That's your hours of operations. The business is running eight to five, correct?
Right, I understand, yes, correct.
The hours of operation, that's when we can go.
Eight to five, yes.
Or maybe call eight to five. And then continuing afterwards is drop-off.
We drop off, yes.
So it's pretty much 24/7?
Not typically. Pat can actually speak better. Sorry, Pat.
That's right.
The latest, maybe they come in that, Pat's the general manager of that facility.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, you know, at night or on the weekends is going to be deliveries. You know, it depends on the volume, but it's not 24 hours a day. You know, there might be an occasional peak here and there, but we typically won't have people run 24 hours a day.
Very good. And that's seven days, though?
It depends on the volume, but no, we're Monday through Friday, eight to five is our hours of operation for, you know, most of our pickups and deliveries, but occasionally there's, they go into the night, yes.
The reason I'm asking, guys, I'm sorry, folks, is Bob brought it up. It's been a concern since when all you folks moved in, and on behalf of the planning board present this evening, we have not, we have not received any complaints of problems, be it high speed, be it noise, be it light, be it heavy, heavy truck traffic, okay, in the sense, up till right now. So over the year, two years now, pretty much, that you all been there. 60% of the people in this town still don't know where it is. The people on the street do, and they're living with it. There are questions about, okay, and if you folks, meaning Copart's, look back to the first meetings we had and when you all established yourselves, and I'm just going to say it this way, hopefully you will do the same that you have, you did when we started here. All right, concerns or reference impact of lights, your lighting, and that's going to be questions going on. We're going to have a couple of questions after this. And if you're going to maintain what you have now and just expand it, there's a good possibility, once we work with the PD and the town works with the PD, or PD works with you folks, and the word gets out to your truckers. That's the biggest thing I want, and that, I'll let the board know too. My concern is getting word out to the truckers. All right, I know from Mad Dog to all, I'm just picking on the truck you see. And believe me, John knows, he had to come to the top of Coy Hill because one of the big rigs went right by my house and it don't go no place. It's a cow path and then it's bejesus because bejesus don't know where the hell I am. All right? And the GPS is going to take you by my house and once you get there, the world ends. This poor guy's standing there like, whoa, and it's a full carrier. We had a good time. Everybody had a good time, huh? But it's just the idea that it's an old neighborhood, and if you look down, there's some houses being sold, not because, just the idea we're transitioning. And I would say that. I want to make sure that the school buses and the kids and the people in that town still can get, enjoy their days, and you people live quietly and keep that business going because you're well-known and take care of things in other parts of the country. Okay? Thank you. All right? Now, do we have questions? I know we have a family here, the McClellans. Folks, would you like, we have a copy, if the board would go to others?
Yep.
And there's a copy of the McClellan's letters. Folks, go for it. The floor is yours and turn to the people you want to speak to.
I understood that another junkyard was going to be opened and I talked to John. I misunderstood that part.
Okay.
But my biggest concern is these people don't know what an accelerator is. I have grandchildren.
Yes, I know, ma'am. Yeah, we know.
And we had trucks go by yesterday. Now, whether or not they were Copart or tow trucks, I don't know, but yesterday was Sunday. And we do have them 24/7, not constant, but we do have them. So the junkyard, I'll take that out in my letter, but I am concerned with the speed. And we have no peace.
You're speaking to the people lying, these are the people.
Yeah, we came here from the city to have peace and quiet.
So directed comments, I'm giving you the floor, direct it to them, please, and I think they could take heed to it. They know how to talk to people.
We have a business up the road now. That's not what we moved out here for. We moved out here for the, the beauty of the country and the quietness.
Yep.
And that's been taken away.
Well, hopefully, you know, the point's being taken by us and by those, the folks present tonight. That's why we asked them to be here, and that's why I brought it up first, and I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
It's fine.
No. Mr. McClellan, anything to say?
Right this second now.
Very good. Is that Tony sitting next to you?
Geez, bud, you've got to bend over the ears, didn't you?
Good to see you again. Folks, anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, my name is Brenda Masa Kevits and I live, I'm in a butter. Those of you here from Copart might know my house. I'm up on the little hill on the cinnamon colored ranch with the kind of setback from the road. I'm right next to the old white Robert Fidgel house. I'm right there. So you're in back of me and you have the old driveway running by my house. The only thing that I'd like to bring up that I think is a bit of a concern is the number of trucks that get lost. I know they go by their GPS, but I'm 620. The old Robert Fidgel house is 600, but the entrance to Copart is past 620, further down the road. Now, since you've moved here, I think if I had to get paid for every time I gave truckers direction, I would be a very wealthy woman sitting here right now. And I know you don't run a wonderful new sign down at the bottom, but over on the old driveway that goes past the Robert Fidgel house, the trucks go up there all the time. And I know John's been up there bailing people out a couple of times up there because they've gotten lost and they've actually gotten stuck. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that maybe if, I don't know what you could do, if you could put a sign as this main entrance with an arrow, it would save those truckers a lot of problems. And that's a lot of me. I don't really care, but I see those guys go up with the big rigs and then they get stuck, they don't know how to get back, and they go back toward Warren and... So I just wanted to mention, I know your new sign is down there, but, but over by the old driveway, there's nothing. So it's just a suggestion, that's all, because I see it firsthand every single day. So I just thought I'd let you know that that happens an awful lot.
Thank you. Yes, Melissa.
Would you plan on changing any of the access to the property? Would you have a separate entrance?
No.
It would be the same?
Same, same access as they have now?
I just have a comment. I know you said you've been here 25 years. I think Vigils has been up there more than 25 years because I've been here since 77 and they've been up...
Over 50.
Yeah. And it was a business, junk business then, so I know that's been here an extended period of time.
It's interesting in that as new moves in and establishes themselves, which we need, every town needs to grow, everybody remembers the old and how the town was established and the old trucking. And when a business comes in and they draw, you know, delivery trucks into it, whatever, we kind of, we kind of look at it as, oh, man, there's another truck going up the road. I mean, Reed Street, where Kathy is on South Street, you and I are way up on the hill. Gee, someone else. We have to adjust to them. And as long as they abide by what, they get lost for a couple of times, we turn them around, laugh and say, what are you doing up here? Or in my driveway? We will live with them, yet the biggest thing I think the board here likes, everybody can look at everybody here tonight, and I thank Copart and John for coming in, his mom for coming in, and we can all talk about it, and then everybody can be satisfied. Bob can ask questions, we can all look at people and get the points across. So in doing this, we're much better off than having just a business come in and, you've got to live with it. We can make adjustments and live with it. They understand, we understand. They, they want to stay. They're established all up and down the East Coast. They're huge, yet think about how low-profile they are for us. And if we can keep businesses like that, understanding, Mrs. McClellan, Copart's, Bob, Copart's, if we can get an understanding with everybody, then we can live with it. And I think this is the best point about everything here this evening. They know, we know, we know they know. Let's see where it goes. We get the signs on the road, Mrs. McClellan, they're going to be on the road if I've got to put them up, okay?
I had a sign put on the road many years ago that says, "Slow down, children."
Yeah, well...
They never followed that.
Yeah, probably found it after the snowplow went by any alone, but anyway. We're going to get those signs in that road, both ends, and Copart's put that new sign down there past Martha's Home, which is great. Now they know, if we could slow them down coming from the east, when they go up and come by and down and go down into West Warren, however, coming that way and going, it's easier for them to swing in and make the road safer for people when you're going up and down. Hey, these guys are big. Some of them are large, big and bigger. If they can stand aside of the road and make them swings a little shorter, I think everybody's going to be able to live with it. Are there any other questions from anybody present this evening? Tony, go for it, bud.
My question I have is, are you guys creating jobs within our town by bringing more, like more business into our town? Are you hiring people from within our town?
Yeah, actually, we employ, we are, we do hire a lot of people that are in town. We have two from in the town, and then there is two other employees that are from towns around here, so Gilbert, Ware. And yeah, I mean, we always are looking for, to support the local business. You know, when truck drivers come in and ask, you know, where, where can I go to eat? You know, we send them down to Gigi's or we send them down to George's Pizza. You know, we try to support the local business as much as we can. We try to hire local because that's the best thing about a business coming into a town.
Yeah, I was just curious.
So I guess I'm really happy to hear that, and I'm hoping that you'll support the town in the trucks and the speed that they take on our streets. I wasn't going to bring it up, but I have a close personal friend that lives on that street and we visit quite often, and quite often I see the car carriers come by and they're doing 45, 50.
I certainly think the size will definitely help. We can...
And certainly on your behalf to just warn them that, hey, you know, just tell them, these roads are patrolled, the town is serious about it. If you get stopped, expect the inspectors to come out and look at your truck.
Yep.
And that'll, that'll do it, you know? That'll do it. And I'm serious, I have no qualms about calling if I have to. It's, it's a public safety issue, and for me, it's a big issue. You know, I live on a small road that's like that in town. We get a lot of traffic, a lot of kids, a lot of families. Nobody wants to see a tragedy on any end, right? Nobody wants to see a truck driver going off the road trying to avoid somewhere and hurting himself, never mind someone else. So I would appreciate your help in that. Thank you. Obviously, yes, Michael?
One of the first questions I have is, so looking at the assessors map, there was actually 600 Old West Warren Road, and I believe that's actually the Copart property. So it's my understanding that they do not have a driveway to that property, is that correct?
That is not correct. They share the driveways. Vigil's driveway and Copart both share that, and that was a decision that was made in the first draft by the landowner when the property was taken over by Copart's. That driveway is shared.
Oh, okay. But that's not the driveway that we're using, that they're using now?
That is the driveway they're using now. That's the only driveway that'll get them to Copart's.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do you have another one?
Okay. Then the second question was about map 15, lot 47. Does actually, 47 dot one is actually located inside 47?
You know, I'm going to ask Kathy's up. Kathy worked in the assessors office and she would know the map.
Yeah, so as far as I thought, the bottom of the driveway was on 47 dot one and the top half is 47.
It is 47.1.
Get the map, do you?
So, so the reason why I was asking the question is, so is, is the property, is all of the entire parcel or the two parcels being sold or is this just for a right-of-way on 47 and 47 dot one?
The parcel that Vigil has now.
Yeah.
That he's working out of now is being transferred to Copart's. Copart's to the right is staying there, that driveway going up, going into Copart's, which is shared. That Copart's is staying there and they're assuming by permit transfer the other half of Vigil's property, which is the area he is in now. He is cleaning that up, moving out, and Copart's is moving. So that property, I don't have the maps, but that whole lot is consumed into one now by Copart's once the transfer takes place.
Oh, okay. So anything that's on the Vigil's side opposite of, like you said, you go up the driveway, Vigil's is here, and then Copart is off to the right.
Yep.
So this whole, so that would mean 47 and 47 dot one are now going to be all part of Copart?
All parcels one, once the transfer is completed and okayed by the select people because that's a process they handle.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So that means the whole parcel, the buildings, the land, everything will be transferred over?
Whatever, whatever, again, whatever Copart's has in an agreement, what has been shown on us, that whole property. We have the whole property. Mr. Vigil spoke about the garage, excuse me, the barn. That's between the two parties. The other green building or the office building and that, the bigger of the buildings would be assumed and under control of, of Copart's.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
And does that mean that Mr. Vigil will be no longer in business since he's occupying the horses moving somewhere else?
That is between Mr. Vigil and whatever his life and whatever goes on from there. We have no idea. He's transferring that permit, one permit to Copart's.
Right, which includes the sale of the property?
I don't know.
That's not...
I have no idea. A permit is issued to him for the facility.
Right.
I have no idea if there's a transfer, if there's a sale of property. We don't handle sales. Okay? We're talking about a permit transfer in lines, two properties becoming one by the new owner.
Right.
By the new applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Now, reference the questions we had a couple of minutes ago or points I brought up. Lighting, still going to be the same as what you all have in the facility you're working out of now, or is that going to change at all?
No, will not change.
Okay. The area out back, this is clear of all Vigil listens now to the new applicant, the area out back, up to the tree line, fenced in, or how's that going to work? How are you going to secure your property, sir? Ma'am?
My name is Tom Smith and I work for Copart as well, and we would basically replicate everything that we have on the existing property with opaque fence and put some rock down for car storage.
Satisfied? We know where, we all know where it is. That fence you've seen up there, if that's going to be around, fine. The existing, the existing building that, the green building, I'll call it John's garage, call it garage at this time, that'll become an office and part of your facility to work on and everything else, correct?
We'll duke it out with the purse string holders and probably, that would be, that would be a dream item, you know, for, to try to set Patrick up with a facility to commensurate with the land that he had.
Okay.
But we haven't, you know, we take these things in order, and this was, this is a critical piece of that. Once we get this, we can try to beat the guys up for some money to make an office in it.
No, fine, it's just, these are things that people ask. What's going to happen? John's going to think we've been going up there. So if you could explain what you're all going to do up there, the impact, and we're concerned rough and sliding, but we haven't had a question about it since the get-go. And if you're going to do the same, I just want you to elaborate as much as you can about what you're going to do, and that way people are going to be satisfied.
So if we could, if we could put an office in that structure and then we generally just have minimal lighting, which would be emergency egress, something along those lines, it wouldn't, there would be no 40-foot light poles or anything like that to light up the hillside.
Okay. Mrs. McClellan, still got the floor if you want it?
I just zoned out.
We're trying, I'm trying to pull...
I was going to say, and I'm not saying it because it's a threat. I have, you said nobody has complained.
Yes, that's correct.
I wanted to go and sit down with the chief of police.
Okay.
But I kept putting it off because I have to live in that house.
Yeah.
We've been there 28, 30 years, and I don't want problems with anybody, but I was going to ask for a radar trap.
Mrs. McClellan?
Sure.
Why not? Seriously? And folks, I'm not, I'm not going to prolong this, and I already asked, but go ask the guy. Ask the selectmen. The floor is yours. You're a town resident and a taxpayer. And you have the, I hate to say it, but you got the right. We all got the right to speak. And I jumped all over here. Speak, they're here. And I'm sure Pat is going to get letters out to the trucks. And I'm sure, you know, if there is a stop, hopefully the guy's, you know, everything's all right, yeah, he's going to learn. All right? So if you, you want to get out and see the chief, I'm going to do it. I know, I swear.
Well, I would do it right now because I feel like everybody's on board here and Well, I wouldn't do it right now because I feel like everybody's on board here and everybody's gonna try.
I've almost got it.
Everybody will try, Mrs. McClellan, and you know something? You can have.
Just traveling fast on that road.
Well, Tony got hit backing out of our driveway.
Yep.
Totally car. Had he had the kids in the back, they'd be gone.
Okay, so you just made another point. They're absorbing this left and right because they don't wanna lose out. All right? They don't wanna lose out. They're established here. They're big. And all it takes is get a couple complaints and we hold the hearing in violation of the permit. And no, Coparts doesn't wanna be in the paper and sit in front of the judge over in Brookfield District Court on a Saturday or a Friday afternoon.
Right.
Okay? They're too big. We might be small, I keep saying it. We're a pumpkin patch at the end of Worcester County. But we got voice. And I'm not afraid and the board's not afraid and the selectmen aren't afraid to make sure these points are taken. Okay? All right, Mr. McClellan, you're just ducking down on me.
I'm just telling you, you listen.
He doesn't talk at home either.
Well, he's like most guys, right? We don't have the chance to talk at home of that one.
Good point.
All right. Did Tony leave?
Yes, he did.
I hope Coparts open the door, you know, with their expansion is able to look about job applications for people. We need it, folks. And I'm not pushing.
Well, he has a good job. He was just asking. He's a roofer.
Mr. Gagnon, you have a question, sir?
Yeah, with the expansion, I just wanna make sure you guys include some surveillance in there. Because I know that there are or have been in the past some issues that have gone on. Just to make sure that if anything goes down, the police have quick access to video in order to quickly remediate anything that's going on. That and having them up there is an immediate deterrent. Because that's, that's one of the toughest things, because Johnny had it all the time. You know, you try to, people are going in. What do they call it? Midnight auto, that's what they used to call it. So just to make sure you have something up there as that deterrent. And if something goes on, the police have instant video access to it. But I know for a fact, by the way, that these guys have hired within. I know a lot of people that have worked for them. So they're hiring local.
That's a plus for all of us. All right, is there any other comments, concerns, questions? Sue has one. Stand by Sue. Anybody from present here this evening, Bob? Stand by one. Folks, hearing that and seeing no hands. Sue.
Okay, my only comment is I haven't met any of the trucks there. Hope I don't, because I was driving my RV over to John's all the time. But the Main Street, man, those guys haul. They fly down Main Street. So if you could, when you're putting out your letters to your drivers. Main Street's pretty, yeah, they do.
Point, very good. Anything else? Sue?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Bob?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank all the parties for coming tonight. John, I've known you for a long time. I think you're a good businessman. I hope you're gonna do something else in town and I hope you stay with us. The Coparts, you know, we're lucky to have you here. We understand that as a town. But I think you understand too after tonight that we are a town and we stand for each other in the town. And I'm very, very sensitive to speeders on our streets. You know, I'm on the school board. I spend a lot of time with our students and I really wouldn't wanna see anybody hurt. So thank you for taking that to heart and thank you for bringing it to light and exercising your rights. Because it's always a pleasure to see citizens come forward and speak up for themselves. But I appreciate everybody coming together tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
What's it, two seventy-seven?
Two seventy.
Two seventy-seven, yeah.
Two seventy. All right, hearing that from the board, any other questions from the board? Kathy, any concerns, anything you wish to say or make sure is in order?
No.
You're happy with it? Very good. People present this evening, anybody, again, we've had input from the butters. We see eye to eye the applicant and the owner, the transfer, again, the transfer is a separate issue based on the selectmen's decision. Was that a question, ma'am?
No.
No, 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 no. Hopefully the driveway's safe. I know Coy Hill isn't, so I'll meet a couple in the course of the year again, but that's okay. They'll learn up there. All right, with that, is there a motion on the board, from the board after hearing? All concerns, voicing, and having a great time here this evening. Is there a motion to accept the application two seventy-seven, special permit application two seventy-seven of Vigil and Vigil on a transfer of properties?
I make a motion that we accept the application of two seventy-seven permit.
Between Coparts and Vigil, correct?
Between Coparts and Vigil.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, thank you, sir. Motion made second and all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Five ayes. I need a vote.
Aye.
I need one vote. Aye for Bob, Derek?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sue, Melissa?
Aye.
And myself. Thank you. Folks, thank you very much, those who are here for the Vigil hearing, Coparts hearing. Thank you, folks. I appreciate it. Glad to meet you.
Thank you.
Hey, McClellan, see you later. Maybe, keep us informed.
I will.
Good to meet you too, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What happened?
Carrie.
We can listen to this interview.
What happened?
I'll just go to the back.
I'm an addition.
Like a little thing.
The chairman is working ahead. On each side of the highway, and nothing of a point.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And we've been waiting.
See, now they do what they say and talk to their truckers and we get the signs out there and they don't understand the problem at times.
I'm gonna speak with the chief tomorrow and, you know, and talk.
And I'm not kidding, call the inspectors, let the inspectors come to.
No, but that's the last thing.
That last thing they wanna see is the lady.
All right, folks, we'd like to move on now if we could, please. Thank you. Okay, here we go. Next on the agenda is the meeting with James Gagnon, chairman, selectman type?
Going on, yeah, well, always both, always one, always the other.
Okay, on the district overlay.
Yeah. My apologies first off to the board. It's been a little crazy lately. The board pulled me in a lot of directions. In late July, Commonwealth of Massachusetts finally came to terms with recreational marijuana, all approved already, all set to go. We have approved up in the overlay district right now, medical. One of the articles going before the people at the town meeting coming up in November is whether or not we wish to have recreational dispensaries in town. How, because this town passed it forty-eight to fifty-two percent, too close for the selectmen to say absolutely have to do or absolutely don't have to do. Regardless of how that turns out, what I would like to look at or have you look at is adding to the overlay district recreation with the caveat that if the town has a bylaw that does not allow for dispensaries, then it is only for cultivation and processing. If it allows dispensaries, then everything goes up there and we're just adding recreational to the medical. But if the town chooses not to have any dispensaries and we're a dry town, I don't wanna lose out on the possibility of getting a cultivation and processing company in there with the bakery and all that. That's a lot larger of an operation than the medical. It's also a for-profit company. So right off the get-go, we're able to tax these companies. So we get the jobs, we get the taxes, we also get, what the heck is that called? The host agreement on top of that, which goes right into the general fund. Currently with the medical, we're getting fifty thousand a year plus five thousand for sports teams and local charities. And that is about to go through when the first one opens up so that we can start dispensing that to the local sports teams, charities, and Boushah's getting some of that directly into his account. So I just wanted to throw that out to you guys. It's really short notice. May have to wait for the other one, but you know, I'm trying to get many, many things done with a limited amount of hours that I can actually stay awake.
So our current bylaw says only cultivation?
It, no, our current bylaw says medical.
Right, and only cultivation?
No. We allow.
We allow dispensaries?
Yes, we do.
And build this stuff?
Yes, we do.
But only there?
Right. The reason we don't have them is when it was brought to me from Heal, I said I would absolutely back them on that if that's the direction they wanted to go. But I asked them that if they're looking to open their, for all intents and purposes, retail outlet, would you want it on South Street and sixty-seven? Or would you want it on Route twenty or Route thirty-two or Route nine or more well-traveled, something easily accessed from the highway? They understood where I was coming from. They agreed with where I was coming from. And I worked with them, got them in touch with the planning board down in Sturbridge and that's where the dispensary is going. The other dispensary is going down the Cape. So we have a great area for cultivation and processing because we're off the beaten path and nobody's gonna bother. But as far as having a dispensary, you want something with a little more traffic. So that's how I kept that up. And I didn't want it, so I came up with that.
Comments?
So you're asking to have it so it's on top of, we're at home. Normally for not just growing, you want it for processing.
Well, right now it allows everything. It allows cultivation, it allows processing and it allows dispensaries.
Right.
I want that for recreational as well.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's it. That's your end. The other one has to do with the town and whether or not they want a dispensary. If they say no, then we don't have any dispensaries up there. So all I'm looking for this board to do is add recreational or remove the word medical.
Bob?
You're gonna have to define a couple of things, Bob.
Go for it.
When you say dispensary.
Yes.
Are you talking about a place that dispenses medically prescribed marijuana? Or are you talking about a retail head shop?
No, it is a, right now the dispensary for the medical side, which is approved and everything over there, is for the dispensing of medical marijuana, the oils. That's approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Yeah, what's the answer?
Here, and what is the answer to Bob, the other answer to Bob's question?
A head shop? That doesn't fall under. The recreational, we don't know yet.
So, but if we were to, if this board were to consider a marijuana law or a change to our zoning laws in the marijuana field to allow recreational marijuana dispensary, would you then call that basically a retail outlet?
That would be a retail.
Or what people might call a head shop?
It would be a retail outlet, but as a separate article, we're asking the town whether or not they want that. And that article will supersede the dispensary part of the article that you guys are part of.
If I may continue?
Yeah, keep going.
So, so am I to understand that the, you're gonna have a question on the town meeting for an article? Is that a non-binding article?
Right now it's a non-binding article to get the feel of where they want it.
And I commend that because I think that the town officials should know where the town stands on that. And that certainly makes our job a lot easier.
Yep.
And so I appreciate that you would do that at a town meeting. I think that's a good idea. And I think if you don't get all your answers by the time needed, you might wanna put it on a ballot vote as non-binding as well. What is your, continuing with that if I may, what is your timeline?
ASAP, but I have more patience than the people that I'm talking to.
So I guess I'm talking about your client's timeline?
Client's timeline, they want it yesterday. They always want it yesterday, but everything is.
What is it that they exactly want to put in our town?
What they wanna look at is a grow facility. They also wanna have the bakery in there. They wanna have the candy area for the infused edibles. And then take all of that out to a separate dispensary.
So they don't wanna actually dispense?
Right. The one that I'm talking to now who is looking at working a deal with Hardwood Knitters for one floor wants a dispensary somewhere else. They already got, I didn't even have to pitch them on the, you don't want that here. They understand they don't want that here. They want it in a more populated area.
So they just wanna make everything here?
Right. They've run out of space on their medical part already. And they know that the recreational is just gonna explode. That's, that's where the money is.
Oh, yeah.
That's where the money is. Now, right now, I'm not sure, I think, I think on the medical side, technically you can get more than you can when you buy on the recreational side. It's just that there's a whole big to do with it. But the recreational part, you don't need the ID card.
So what, if they're baking, making edibles and doing all that there, that mean, that doesn't mean that we're gonna be selling it in town? That's just go over there and make it.
It can mean that though.
It can if the people want it.
If the people want it.
Oh, yes, but the answer to your question is.
It can.
Yeah.
Not if people want it, so you asked the question.
People want it, they want it, whatever.
No, you asked the question about the facility.
Yeah.
The answer is yes.
Right.
Now, the second part of that question is.
If they want.
If the town wants it, if the town doesn't want, this company will keep taking it out to their dispensaries.
Exactly.
There are other shops.
Well, that's what I was getting at, was like, yes, they can make it, bake it, cook it, do whatever they want.
And then down the road, if the town wants to have it, they can turn around and put one in town.
Right, yeah. But somebody else could do that anyway. If the town voted.
If the town wants it.
If the town voted that they wanted it, it wouldn't necessarily come from the people that are working over at Rights. It would come from somebody else.
It might.
It might come from my supply.
It might, that's what I'm saying to you.
Well, that's fine. What I'm saying is if they're going to do that, let's us get the money from it and have them bake, cook, whatever. And if the town doesn't wanna sell it in town, that's fine. They can sell it somewhere else, but we're still getting money.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
But wouldn't we have to change our bylaws to say where it could go with zones and?
Well, yeah, we would have.
It would, that's the overlay.
That, right, it's the overlay, either removing the word medical or adding the word recreation.
It's just keeping it at Rights complex and Hardwood complex. Yeah, keep it all over there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what it's there for. And basically, all I'm looking for is another arrow in my quiver to try to get more jobs here. I just want people working.
So from what I see now, Mr. Chairman, and you can certainly direct me in a straight direction, but from what I see now, basically what our medical marijuana coverage in the zoning bylaws is, is basically what the state standard was for medical marijuana.
That's correct. That is correct, because we waited for that to be settled and now it's there.
So now, as Jim just said a couple of months ago, the recreational is now moving. So the facilities and/or these companies are starting to reach out and look. So go ahead, Bob.
So basically for us to allow them to cultivate and grow and manufacture whatever products they wanna manufacture, we would have to rewrite our bylaw to include the recreational part? I mean, they couldn't still make it under the medical part and then take it somewhere else and dispense it as recreational part?
No, because it's too separate, it's, the way that we have it set up, you can't. You have your.
It's permits, right?
Right, permit wise, special permit wise, you have to have a special permit for your medical and a special permit for your recreational. Remember, Heal Link was inquiring if they could mix it and then told, no, you can't. One is for one, one is for the other, which I think was a smart move.
And the reason for that was, based on bill and seminars, based on probably sixty percent of the towns and cities in the state, that's the way everybody looked at it as the beginning. A permit for this gets you in the door, gets you going. Yep, medical's a big thing. Now, when it comes down to recreational, now we're gonna look at how the state sets it up, how other towns are looking at it and then see what Warren wants.
And that's where we are now. We've just asked Bill to start looking into.
And that's what he's doing tomorrow morning, get a seminar.
We were just in a, in a conference today, the chief and I.
At the very least, I would, I would expect that we would wait for this non-binding vote to come through so we have that information. And are we then required to at least have a public hearing based on that vote?
What is, but what he's saying is.
If we're going to make alterations to this law?
Well, it's an overlay thing. But he said that if the vote is no, then this is a moot point.
Right, then it's a moot point.
So then it still can be processed here. They can still bake it.
It's just the dispensary that won't be allowed there because the town went against it. So, I mean, moving, moving forward is something that you can begin at this time?
Somebody can do this stuff already on the medical side of things. It's just that do we want to allow somebody to come in and do it on the recreational side?
Right.
Basically, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
I believe so. I'm looking at.
I'm trying to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at something that came down from the selectmen's office today. And it states non-binding referendum on whether or not to allow recreational marijuana dispensaries in town.
Yeah.
A yes vote will, you know, will allow dispensaries and a no vote will not. I'm trying to figure out recreational marijuana dispensaries. To me.
It's a retail shop.
It's a, it's a packy for weed. That's the easiest way to think about it.
Yet we were just talking about a company going in down there, making, baking, candying and then sending it out.
Yes.
Is that recreational too?
Yes.
Is that a recreational dispensary?
No, not a dispensary. That's not a dispensary. That's cultivation and processing.
Well, why aren't we asking a town to? Well, why aren't we asking the town to allow, first of all...
Open sales.
Open sales.
What it should be.
Or why aren't we asking the town, first of all, to allow recreational making, baking, and candying?
'Cause I don't think, under the law, you can separate them yet. I think you can have a moratorium, which is what we're probably gonna look at.
That's the next question because Wilbraham or Statement, Wilbraham and other surrounding towns have had this on the floor earlier...
Yep.
Last year, and they passed moratoriums to find out about it.
Right. Now, that's on the dispensary. That's on the open sales.
So why aren't we asking, first of all, on a non-binding referendum, to have, to allow this to happen in the area, okay? The making, baking, and candying. And then...
Because they can't change, that won't change the zoning of the overlay district. I think only you guys can do that.
Well, that's right. Yep, that's us. We can allow that to go on there. And the reason we can allow that to go on there...
All right, so, wait a minute.
Yep.
Let me finish my thought. So that means that you're asking if we want to ask the town if they want that, you guys to add that?
Sure.
Okay.
What's wrong with that? That way, we get that incentive.
That deserves from having to have a public hearing.
You get that in town.
All right, and then what we can do is we can move forward, and if they say yes, just so I can go back to the companies that I'm talking to. And it doesn't mean that they're gonna come in, because I've talked to a bunch of companies.
That's right.
If they say yes...
If they say yes on the making and baking.
On the making, baking, candying, all that good stuff. Right, on the jobs.
And we still have to look at, go ahead.
Give me eight weeks, 10 weeks? And you guys can have something ready for the next meeting or ready for the ballot?
For meetings. For meetings, so that we can put it on the floor in May.
Right.
Okay? That way, we can get it into town.
So it would be made, that it would be done.
This way, we can get this into town. We can open up. And I've got a real problem, and this is me personally, all right? I don't see Tony Markat coming in here and sitting with you and asking about it. We're selling, Jim, we're selling his facility.
I work with what I have.
He is the owner and the operator of that facility, and Tony should be sitting right next to you because I, I'm sorry, I asked you that a year ago. A year ago, and that next meeting, we continued to, Tony came in and presented it. Tony should be here selling his business. He's bitching and moaning, and it's on tape, I'll use it. He's bitching and moaning, and he can't sell nothing. You're out there pounding the pavement on behalf of them.
Well, I'm a good sales guy.
That's a wonderful thing. Why isn't the guy who owns it, who's sitting back there, not with you saying, "This is what we'd like to do, Jim, Mr. Gagnon has been working with him, we've been working together"? I don't see the man in here. We're gonna sell his, we're gonna redistrict for them? No. We're gonna redistrict for the town if the town wants to.
Yeah.
He gets his posterior end in here and makes a bitch about it, saying, "Yeah, we wanna do this." Because I don't care, I'm all for it.
No, I got you.
But I'm not all for, I'm not using the word, but I'm all for Tony Markat sitting in the background.
But there's nothing I can do about that. I can just deal with what I got. I can just deal with what I got and try to bring business in, Bill.
It benefits the town.
If it benefits the town, that's the bottom line. The rest of it's a bunch of...
Um, I do.
I got you.
I got a question for Selectman Gagnon. Have you guys thought about allowing sales of this product at the package stores? If you ask me, that's really where it belongs. We shouldn't be opening private or separate retail outlets. It belongs in the package stores.
I don't think that, I don't, I don't know if you can do both in one area. I don't know if the Commonwealth allows for that.
It's all gonna be up to the ABC.
I believe, ABC's...
You haven't seen anything in the water prevents you right now.
No.
He's just gonna open one. I got coffee, I got beer, I got weed. What do you want?
Well, hey, that is a conversation that's happened.
It is at the same house now.
Because it's already controlled.
Yep.
To a sense. You gotta have an ID. So if I get an ID that says I can buy alcohol, 21 and over, and the laws or whatever the case may be go that way, I can go in and get this ID. I can get a fifth of Jack Daniels, and I can get a bag of, whatever they call it, pomegranate smelling, you know.
How would you?
On the flip side, you would have a separate business that's open, that you would tax separately. And you would be able to tax that separate, you would be able to tax that separate business 3% of their profits.
So getting back, and these are discussions we're gonna have.
Yep.
So it's a question.
What's wrong with doing it that way, what I just suggested?
I have no problems with that. I just, because it delays getting it enacted, which is fine, because I can just keep talking to the people that I'm talking to.
Jim, does it delay getting it enacted, or does it put a rush on the town? And personally, this is just me, I know the guy, I like him, I know the family. The moderator does really not go for too much open discussion on the floor because things get turned and then someone goes, "Move the question."
Yep.
And we got questions out there that, huh, what just happened? And you know that's happened to things since you've been there. If we can describe it to people easily, that they're gonna make bacon candy, go for it. I don't think there's anybody in town up to it.
So we'll do the open question, we'll put it on in May to get it done in May, if the people want it.
We got the time for the meetings. We'll be able to hold meetings.
Next, that one's a special, November 2nd.
Special November 2nd.
I'm on a special.
I got it on the special. I got a letter of intent that I can pull if you guys needed more time, because...
And if you have another special for the school or something, they got that $45,000 thing?
It's down.
It's down?
We'll talk later. You and me, a little discussion.
But you never know. I mean, you know, the thing is, is that it's gonna be a lot easier. I mean, look, they can do it medically. I personally don't have a problem with it either way. I think it's gonna bring money to the town, and I think it will bring jobs. But I also don't wanna act on how I feel, of course. I don't wanna act on how...
Right, what do the town want?
The quicker we can get that information, the better off we'll be. I'm sure we'll have some good hearings about it once we start diving into the actual law.
Right, so then they're not gonna wanna do that. They don't wanna do it.
That's right, but still, let's get the cooking. Let's get the cooking.
I don't wanna hold that.
Get these guys in here.
Yeah, I'm willing to.
So you want, you want something in there for the make bacon candy?
Yeah.
All right, for the cultivation and processing only?
In the mill district.
Does the board want it in?
Doesn't allow them to dispense, they can make, they can manufacture.
Because the town's gonna do that separately.
I don't have a problem with that.
Right. And that, we got them in. Then, once we get the info, you talk to the other guy, the other half or third, we can come back here and say, okay, does the town wanna open up two dispensaries, one on one, a recreational head shops, whatever we should call them? And then we can get it that way. And it's by steps.
I think it's good for...
All right, so the question is going to be for cultivation and to change...
Manufacturing of marijuana products.
Right, to cultivation and processing of recreational marijuana.
There it is. In the overlay district.
In the overlay district.
Is there a problem with anybody with that wording? Is there a problem with anybody looking at it that way on the floor?
I'm gonna bring it into you guys before we do it anyway.
Jim?
HEAL Link is starting.
One more meeting until...
HEAL Link is building right now, yeah. Their CEO is Trish, one of the ladies who's come in before you.
Oh, okay.
And she actually left her job. They made her stick around because they needed somebody to set up the stuff at the ball field. She does all the concerts, the ball fields and all that. So they had her stick around, but now she is out of there, and she is CEO full-time down there.
Deferred.
Yep, and they hopefully will start hiring at the end of this year.
More the better.
Hey, it's for jobs.
So is that okay with you? I'm asking you now, is that okay with the board just decided? After discussing?
Absolutely.
And I think it's easy to sell that to the town on the floor than people start talking about where's it gonna go, what corner, how close to the school.
Right, and then we'll do the non-binding referendum, talking about dispensaries, and then we'll all have a bunch of big conversations around it.
I mean, who knows?
Right.
The DOA may regulate that they want it tied in with the tobacco and firearms industry and then you come to find out that all your manufacturers supply packy stores with their wacky stuff or whatever, you know?
That'd be a great name for a place, the Wacky Packy's, huh? Isn't that a couple of those cards when we were kids? Something like that.
W-A-J-C-K-E-Y or something, but that would fit in this town.
Yes.
Wackies. That would fit in this town. Is that okay with you?
Fantastic.
Great. Anything else? I'm not gonna hold you up?
No, 'cause I gotta get some sleep. I'm up at 1:30.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jim.
Guys, as always.
Everybody else set with this?
Good to see ya.
No, I'll see you.
Yeah, yeah. You welcome to the show, surely.
Thanks, Rob. Everybody tonight on that conversation, that's gonna give us a chance to also speak. And Bill, after tomorrow, we'll get tours. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on, discussion of gravel pit site visits. I stated, I made a comment to Melissa prior. It was a great day. Summer's out, the, a lot of the, quite a few of the landowners over there were there.
I was surprised.
And it was, was eye-opening for everybody. Kathy did get letters out, thank you, to everybody, discrepancies that were found. Or, you know, and then those that we spoke to about their machinery on site and thanking them for, you know, following the bylaws they would have and the few things that were required and then to upkeep too.
First time that we've ever met anybody up at...
What's his name? Kelly's?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've never met anybody. We, she lives in Cheltenham, that's all we knew. But that guy was good. Hopefully, that Lankards is gonna be taken care of. Lankards, Melissa, up here on the left-hand side where the apartment houses, going up 19. Piles of aluminum. A car from Connecticut just parked in the middle of the, on the other side of the fence. It was pretty much a disgrace.
The horse trailer in the back?
Yeah, the old horse trailer in the back buried by all the fragmites and the rest of the weeds.
Don't fight it in the woods.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll, hopefully that'll be taken care of. If not, we'll just pass it on to Jack and let them know that we can bring him in for here for the bylaws or whatever. Anything else discussed by the board about it?
I thought it was a good day.
Everybody got exercise?
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, especially at the fountain's pit.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody walked to the top, the fountains.
Oh, yeah, we walked all the way to the top so we could give the hole. Everybody wanted to see the hole. I could've done without the hole.
Even Jim was looking kinda red.
Yeah.
Oh, he's...
It's a long walk, you know. Yeah, I guess so, Jim.
He did say we could take the trucks.
He did say that, and everybody said, "No, let's walk up the hill."
So with that, questions, reference? Any questions for anybody present, referencing? Michael Burrell?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to discuss the issue that happened at the Lois Fidgel one.
This one again, I'm sorry, I didn't hit the...
No, I wanted to discuss the situation that happened at the Lois Fidgel gravel pit.
That has nothing to do with us. That is to do with you and the, and you, the landowner. The planning board was there.
Yeah.
And we did what we had to. We spoke to Mr. Fidgel, and we left. That has nothing to do with us, Michael. Okay? An incident.
But my, but my question is, is...
The incident has nothing to do with it, and that was your question, Michael? Any other questions, Michael?
Well, yeah, it turns out, well, it turns out it's a public agenda item. And I told you, and I told you on video, I'm being nice, I told you on video that Charlene Faris and I were gonna be at the end of the driveway.
When did you tell us that?
I told you that right on the video.
Okay, if you did, fine. It's on video, fine, Michael. Okay.
So the issue is, is there was no public meeting then at the end of the driveway.
It was posted here, Kathy posted. We discussed on the way back that we withhold holding the meeting because of the timeframe. Kathy and I came back, she was here.
Yeah, we weren't gonna have a meeting there.
We were going, oh, please. We dispersed from there. Kathy went in, I walked in with her. She put a taping on the door that the meeting would be continued until tonight. Now, whatever happened to that piece of paper that was on the door, I saw it go up. We left the area. No one was present here, Michael.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, is the Lois Fidgel agenda item is, is a public item. Meaning that the public would be allowed to meet at the end of the driveway to have a discussion with the planning board, and that obviously did not happen because...
The public meeting, the way it stays with Lois or Jim Fountain or anybody else, is with the landowners only. That is the public meeting for the landowners. Any discussion after that with yourself, your representative, or you being a representative, or anybody who wished to come in to a public meeting would have been held here. Public meetings were posted to be with the landowners.
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly what this says.
Which was there with John Fidgel and his wife when we arrived.
Right.
I spoke with John that we had been there, that we found this, and he was to take care of that. And then whatever transpired after that, transpired, okay? Then we came back here. At that time, the rest of the board that was present decided to hold it tonight. Go ahead.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is there was, there should, what I'm understanding is, 'cause there's a time on this particular, I understand what you're saying. But what I'm saying is, because there's a time slot, 4:30 to 5:00.
4:30, 5:00, to be with the landlord.
For the landlord.
But it doesn't say that on the piece of paper?
It doesn't. It says a public meeting to be held with Lois Fidgel and/or a representative, right?
Well, no. Well, that's the other thing, too, is, is, we, Charlene and I pulled up the Worcester County Registry of Deeds, and it turns out it's under the husband who's passed away.
That has nothing to do with us, Michael. We have it under Lois and John Fidgel on our plans, on the assessors' plans.
Right, but you also made a statement that, that John, the son, that was here tonight, had access to a family trust. We found out the family trust doesn't legally exist.
Michael, that's up with someone else.
Well, you're, well, sir, you're the one that said John's allowed because of the trust. So what I'm now telling you is the trust didn't exist. So you didn't meet with Lois Fidgel, what it says in the piece of paper.
I represented, I met with a representative, and I made that statement, excuse me, pointy, I made that statement in the office.
Yes, but you also said that he was the son of the trust, what we just found out.
At this conversation, you have the right to file a complaint in district court against me for making that statement. Do so if you wish. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, sir, I'm not done yet.
Any other questions? Michael?
Yes.
It's over.
So the other thing, the other thing, too, is I already filed criminal charges against John Fidgel and his wife. And if you wanna set up criminal charges, I certainly have no problem because obviously you didn't follow procedure.
We'll move on.
And of course, you're just gonna ignore me because you know you're wrong.
Michael, it's over. Thank you. File a complaint in district court, please.
Yeah, I'll have your ass arrested. That'd be good.
Michael, will you please leave the meeting at this time? I'll have you removed for making that statement. Which one would you do? Fine, thank you. Will adjourn for five minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Me too, I'm motioning to adjourn.
Motion adjourned? Thank you. Michael, I'm calling the police department. Have you just removed. Kathy, can we get on the office?
Well, it's a public meeting.
Michael, you made a statement that I have never made to you since I met you, and you're gonna be removed now, and I will file a charge with the town.
You can't file a charge.
I can.
You're the one that threatened me on the DM video.